All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. This meeting is being held in our hearing room at One Central Street on the ninth floor. It's also being held via Zoom and it is being livestreamed on our YouTube channel. And we are gonna, we are about an hour behind schedule, so we are resuming this afternoon with public hearing item number six, and I will turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation, to take us through the afternoon items.
All right, thank you. Public hearing item number six is LPC 24-07428. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 823, Lot 72, 54 West 22nd Street, in the Ladies Mile Historic District. It was our style store building designed by Stevenson &amp; Green and built in 1896 to 97. The application is to remove a fire escape. I understand you may be waiting just a minute for the applicant to rejoin, but we'll hold on just for a minute until that happens.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Joseph, I have promoted you to panelist. Please accept that promotion. Great. Joseph, I'm gonna give you control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. Joseph, please click on your screen. Okay, and then you can unmute your line, state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Uh, yes, you just unmuted.
Joseph Galea, you can start whenever you're ready.
Oh, yeah, but do I need my drawings to show you?
Joseph, if you have control of the presentation, you can advance the slides using your arrow keys.
I'm trying to figure this out.
Do you have arrow keys on your keyboard?
Do I have what?
Arrow keys on your keyboard.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. Oh, oh, arrow keys. You mean this blue thing on the right?
You can advance the slides using your up and down arrow keys.
Abby, do you want to do advanced slides for the applicant, please?
I can do it for you.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you so much. I'm a little, I'm a computer oriented. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just let me know when you want to go to the next slide.
Oh, no, I guess it's very straightforward. I mean, uh, you know, we, we, we asked the staff at LPC if we could remove the fire escape from the facade of the building, and they said no. Okay, so we had to go, you know, we're in a public hearing now. But we did get Community Board Five's approval to remove it, to remove it. So I'm asking you guys now, can we remove it? Because if you go to the next couple of slides, you're gonna say, you're gonna see that the facade is a good-looking facade, okay?
Right. Mr. Galea, can you see the slides, Mr. Galea?
Yeah, I can see them. No, I can see them.
Okay, so Abby is going to move the slides for you if you could just speak to each slide. So let's start with where the site is located.
Well, this is just, okay, well, this is just the landmark zone that it's in, and that's the, on the right, there's a picture of where the building is. But, but, but the important thing is the next couple of slides, okay? Go to the next slide. Okay, yeah, these are, these are images of the building, you know, in the years 1980, 1940, and 1915. And that's fine, okay? I mean, the building had land, it had landmark status, it had a fire escape, okay? But if you go to the next slide, you can see to, I mean, to me, I'm an architect, okay? And I look, I look at that picture on my left and I go, you know, that to me is, is an eyesore. I would rather expose the building in its beauty on the right. And, and, I mean, it's up to you guys to agree with me or not, but that's how I feel.
All right.
So we were asked to take pictures of the deterioration of the, of the, of the fire escape. It's in pretty bad shape.
Okay.
Most of the buildings, most of the buildings at 22nd Street have no fire escapes.
And is your proposal to remove the fire escapes because of the condition of the fire escapes themselves, that are the condition of the facade at the attachment points? Or is it because it's not required any longer and you just don't want the, want them on the facade? What is the reason behind your application?
I'll be honest with you. I mean, you know, fire escapes were big in the turn of the century, 1920s, whatever, but, but today, you know, fire escapes are not ideal in their aesthetic, looking at, you know, the front of the building. You don't, you don't need them anymore. All you need is, 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 you know, a two-hour rated stair that we have, okay? We have, we have six stories, we have a two-hour rated stair. You don't need that second, that second egress.
So your proposal is mostly for, because you don't want the fire escape blocking the windows, is that?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I'm sorry, but look, look at the, look at the picture on the right. The facade is beautiful.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any other questions?
Just fill in, fill in one blank that wasn't noted, which is that there is the decorative ironwork from the original fire escape, not original to the building perhaps, but when it was first installed, but there are also later extensions of plain ironwork, both vertically and I think maybe to the side at the second floor. So this current fire escape has a mixture of original decorative ironwork and then later ironwork some, some years after that.
And just to also give you this regulatory context, the, there are some historic districts that were designated as industrial or commercial historic districts where fire escapes were a typical or traditional feature that reflected changes in health and safety and labor codes in those particular types of buildings. And so in districts like Tribeca and Soho and in Ladies Mile, which is this district, the staff is not allowed to approve the removal of fire escapes. So the staff can approve the removal of fire escapes in other historic districts, but in these historic districts, this is something that the commission, the full commission has to consider and, and that's why this application is before us today. And so we look at, you know, generally, these are not original to the buildings. They came later when the, when new laws came into place. But sometimes we, they are very decorative, so we look at their quality, their level of decoration or ornament, their condition. But, you know, sometimes they are causing damage to the facade and we look at that. So we look at a number of factors when we consider applications to remove decorative fire escapes in these particular historic districts. All right, so is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a couple of remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is John Graham from Victorian Society in New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And once you're a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society, New York. The dilemma here is whether to return the building's facade to its original unencumbered appearance or retain a historic decorative fire escape that's been present for over 100 years. In this case, we come down on the side of retaining the fire escape. This fire escape is highly decorative. It's been on the building a very long time, and its presence probably results from the triangle shirtwaist fire. Fire escapes are character-divining features of loft buildings in this district, and we do not believe its presence significantly reduces the ability of the public to appreciate the design and details of the original building. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HDC notes that this fire escape is both original and a designed feature of this building. We feel it should be retained. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
So, Mr. Galea, we've heard some testimony that is, recommends denial of the removal because the fire escapes are ornamental. Do you want to respond to that?
No, no, I have nothing else to say.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? Yes, Commissioner Letty.
Just was wondering, are, are these, is this an office building or is it a residential building?
Mr. Galea, can you answer that question?
Oh, I'm sorry. What was the question? It's, it's a condo. It's residential, residential.
Residential. Okay, and is, is taking off the fire escape part of any effort to?
I can hardly hear her. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear her. What was the question?
Is the removal of the fire escape related to a project to restore and/or repair the facade?
Yeah, it really is. And, and another, another thing, I mean, you know, my client doesn't, doesn't like the idea of, you know, a condo owner being able to go out into fire escape into another, into another apartment. That's another reason why we wanted to, you know, eliminate it. We don't need it anymore.
Okay. But there is no current comprehensive facade restoration plan that this is a part of. This is about functional, that, that you don't need it and things that apartments don't want people to have access to their apartments. Okay, any other final questions? All right, let's close the hearing. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So will.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Hearing is closed, and this is an application to remove the fire escapes. As we've heard from Corey, this, the fire escapes are historic decorative fire escape balcony railings. They have additional extension railings that are modern and, and maybe a modern extension ladder. And the applicant is proposing to remove it for, because it's not, no longer required. All right, so we'll begin our discussion. And I would say that oftentimes in historic districts where we do have to review the removal of fire escapes and when the fire escapes are in good condition and are decorative or ornamental, we have sort of approved a compromise where we've approved the removal of the ladders but keeping the baskets. So that may be if, if you all look at the condition of the ornamental ironwork here and think that it should be preserved, that could be a compromise. All right, Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. I looked at the baskets. They don't look particularly refined or, I don't believe that they add significantly to the story that the building is telling historically. And I think that given the building type was not one that seems to have had a lot of fire escapes in this particular district, I'm okay with removing it.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I'm somewhat torn. I could go either way. I think removing the ladders makes sense. It also looks like there's a more recent addition on the railings, which may have been a code requirement to raise the railings, but those could be removed and the second floor extension on the other half of the building could be removed. And I will go with what my fellow Commissioners say about keeping the baskets or not, because I could go either way.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I share the same sentiment. I think if, if the staff and the rest of the Commissioners deem that the fire baskets should be retained or repaired, I'm fine with that.
Vice Chair Bland?
If these were original and more, and/or more ornamental, I think I would, I would vote to retain the baskets. But I don't think, we know they're not original, and I don't think they are such great ornamental value that having them on there, they may not, they may not really clarify what it is that was being saved anyway, if they're just sticking on there. And, you know, I can vote to remove them.
Commissioner Letty?
Um, yeah. I, they're not original. They've been added to. I feel like, I think it would be better to go back to the original condition of the building, and I hope that it inspires the owner to make sure that that building is very well taken care of, the facade, it's cleaned up, et cetera.
Thank you, Commissioner Chu.
I am in agreement. And to that point, just work with staff on all the penetrations that are existing and repair all those and clean the facade.
Commissioner Master?
Um, I agree. I think, I think we can remove the ladders as well as the fire baskets.
All right, and Commissioner Jefferson?
I don't see if you leave a portion of it. How it's going to be used? I mean, you're going to go out there and put a blanket at night? It's not the blocks anymore, so I would, might just get rid of it.
All right, so I think we have enough to approve it. Are you comfortable tweaking this to, okay?
Regarding 54 West 22nd Street in Ladies Mile Historic District, the application is to remove a fire escape. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the historic fire escape was previously altered with plain railing and landing extensions that do not match the decorative features of the historic ironwork and detract from the fire escape and building. The fire escape stairs and drop ladder are utilitarian in character. And that their removal, along with nonhistoric railing and landing extensions, will not diminish special character or architectural or historic character of the building. I also find that the baskets themselves are not sufficiently decorative or contributive to the architectural significance of the building to warrant their retention.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Letty?
Aye.
Mr. Master?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next and final items.
Now going to move to.
Oh, it's up already, sorry. So I just clicked and then. Okay.
Is it fun back there?
Yeah.
Hello, how are you?
All right, I'm now going to read in the last item, Public Hearing Item Number Seven, LPC 25-01251. This was noted in the agenda originally as a binding report, is now going to be an advisory report because the scope of work was reduced and now focused just on flagpole installations, which I'll cover in just a minute. So an application for a binding, sorry, advisory report in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1111, Lot 1. This is Central Park, the Swedish Cottage in the, in the Central Park scenic landmark, a building constructed in Sweden for the 1876 Philadelphia exposition in Fairmont Park and moved to its current site within Central Park in English Romantic Style Park Design in 1858 by Frederick Law Olmsted and Calvert Box. The application is to install two flagpoles on the site.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Amy Woodin from Historic House Trust and New York City Parks. The application before you today is at the Swedish Cottage, is only for our proposed installation of two new flagpoles. This presentation did go before the bordering community boards with a railing replacement component, and that has been revised to meet staff level rules. Just want to note that at the top, in case anyone is listening. So Swedish Cottage in Central Park, closest to Central Park West, across from the Museum of Natural History. In its first iteration in Philadelphia, at the far left, you can see there was a flagpole at the roof. It then came to Central Park under the wishes of Frederick Law Olmsted and was installed in its current location with a sort of vineyard at the gable. Following a restoration in the late 80s, early 90s, a flagpole was reinstalled at the roof ridge and for a moment in time flew both the US flag and the Swedish flag together on the same pole. We have learned through a great amount of community concern that that is not in compliance with international guidelines. And so part of this larger capital project for a full roof replacement and restoration was understanding what level of compliance was needed, what installations were needed to fly the Swedish flag at the site in recognition of its sort of architectural language and heritage. So here is our proposal. This is at the north elevation where the main entrance to the theater is. We are proposing two new flagpoles. They will be a sort of dark brown or bronze finished metal pole. The pole on our left will fly the American flag, the pole on the right will fly the Swedish flag. And we are not going to change anything at all at the roof that is currently flying the US flag, because we are not getting into decommissioning flagpoles. That was slightly outside of our scope and capacity. So these are all following standard parks installation and will be filed with the Department of Buildings as well. So we have a pretty detailed section drawing showing the installation and then just a sort of plan detail of where these will be sited, flanking the existing sign of the building. This is just a sort of brief photo montage showing how we feel this will all come together when you're approaching the north entrance of the cottage from the park path. And just a sort of brief visibility study separated into four parts. The largest shade of blue is places in the park where the existing flagpole at the roof is visible, not in conjunction with the building facades. The next level of visibility is places where the flagpole at the roof, the existing flagpole is visible with views of the building. And I'll skip ahead. And then we're looking at that yellow shape will be where we believe the extent of the visibility is of the new proposed poles, sort of over any screening, plantings, or vegetation. And the smallest square of yellow, which is really represented in the bottom two photos, is where you will see all three, both the two proposed and the one existing. So we've tried to limit the overall impact of seeing all three flagpoles together, really just when you're approaching the, the main entrance. And that is the extent of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Well, it exists, so it's.
That's right. So since the proposal is for the two flagpoles in the landscape in front of the building, she's showing where you see all three together so we can evaluate the cumulative effect. And it seems like it's in a very limited corridor where you actually see all three, or a little circle, semicircle, where you actually see all three together.
Yeah, we're, we're lucky that the standard 25-foot height of the flagpoles will keep them under that top roof ridge, so it really does block a lot of the views when you're walking around the cottage.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
Where is the, where is the wood railing on the stairs?
So they were originally proposing a metal railing, and that has been revised so that it now will meet the staff level rules, so it's no longer before us.
No, no longer, okay.
Yeah, we may hear testimony because it was originally calendared as part of it, so we may hear testimony about it, but it's not before us today. It's been revised.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's see if we have any. We have nobody in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is John Graham from Victorian Society in New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And once you are a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society, New York. The proposed flagpoles are relatively modest in scale, but nonetheless, we find they are inappropriate to Central Park and should not be approved. We count the Swedish Cottage as an original park building. It is of the right age and style, and Olmsted apparently was responsible for its relocation to the park. Park buildings are secondary to the landscape. They are purposely designed and sit as so as not to call attention to themselves. Flagpoles have the opposite purpose and effect. They are designed to call attention to themselves as focal points. Flagpoles have the opposite purpose and effect. They are designed to call attention to themselves as focal points and are thus inappropriate. We believe that the only Central Park building that originally had a flagpole is Belvedere Castle. This is the exception that proves the rule as the castle is the only building in the park intended to be the focal point of a view. And that view was accentuated by the pair of magnificent flagpoles and gonpols at Bethesda Terrace, which served to frame the view of the lake, the ramble, and the castle. We should follow the intent of the park's designers and respect the secondary nature of park buildings like the Swedish Cottage and their relationship to landscape. The existing single flagpole has been on the cottage since long before designation. It can remain and continue to fly the American, but apparently not the American and Swedish flags. Adding two freestanding flagpoles to this existing pole is too much. If the protocols for flying the flags of two nations together are behind this proposal, the correct response for Central Park is not to fly either flag on a new pole. This is not Rockefeller Center or the UN. We also respectfully suggest that any available resources for this building should go to the roof, which looks as though it's in an advanced state of deterioration. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Zainab Turan from the Friends of the Upper East Side. Zainab Turan, I promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Our Preservation Committee finds proposed addition of two more flagpoles redundant. Given that the Swedish Cottage is a small rural structure, having three flagpoles seems excessive. We recommend that the Parks Department remove existing flagpole on the roof and keep only two proposed flagpoles on the ground and reduce their size to match the cottage's scale. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West. Megan Fitzpatrick, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates when stewards of landmarks seek to remedy noncompliant work. The installation of two flagpoles flanking the entrance to the Swedish Cottage is an appropriate way to mitigate the former noncompliant flag display. We are however concerned about the potential alterations to vegetation and if trees will be altered to accommodate their installation, and we seek clarification on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC does not object to flagpoles in this location, but we believe they should be reduced in size to more appropriately fit the context and scale of the Swedish Cottage. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised. So I will note that we received letters from Manhattan, Manhattan Community Board five recommending approval, Manhattan Community Board eight recommending approval, Manhattan Community Board 10 recommending approval, and a letter recommending from Manhattan Community Board seven recommending approval, but suggests that DPR explores alternative materials for the railings other than solid bronze, including lasting wood such as cedar or composites. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Thank you. Okay, so the community boards all have recommended approval, as has Landmarks West, although they asked for some information on the sighting. And then we've heard other comments about the size and scale of them. So if you'd like to respond to them, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I will start with just emphasis that this is part of a larger restoration program. And so the installation of two flagpoles fits well within our budget and is not done at the expense of any other work at the cottage. In terms of their height, we could potentially look at a shorter flagpole. There is some concern with the clearance of the flags obstructing views of the window surrounds or even potentially getting into the path of egress, which is why we did not pursue any, any other options. We had a few that we talked through with parks in terms of compliance. But we, we do have some ability when we are setting the flagpoles in the ground to adjust the level that they are in the ground. So we probably have a good foot to sink them even lower to make sure that they do not creep up to the ridgeline. In terms of the plantings around the site, a tree inventory and tree work is a large part of this project, as it is in Central Park. The only tree work being done is pruning around the roof. There will be no sort of concessions made for additional views of the flagpoles. So nothing is changing in terms of the plantings to change their relationship to these.
Great, thank you. All right, any final questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Letty?
Oops. With the installation of these two flagpoles, is it necessary to keep the one on the roof?
It is not a requirement. So the, it's, it's just that any flying of a foreign flag needs a sort of equal adjacent US flag. And we could not combine the presence of something at the roof with something at the, the ground. They're considered two separate installation locations. The design team nixed the idea of adding a second sort of mirrored flagpole at the roof because we felt that was going well outside of the sort of historic configurations at the building. We also nixed installing anything into the facade for the same reason that it was sort of counter to any historic configuration there. And this sort of pulled the whole question away from the building and let us try to resolve it in a less impactful way. I was just told that the decommissioning of a flagpole at the roof was rather complicated. And so I think that when it comes to the flag at the roof being no longer in serviceable condition, that will be a question about the appropriateness of replacing or removing it. But at the moment, we were told to leave it as is.
Okay, any other final questions? Okay, so let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson. Would you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application for an advisory report, or advisory because the work is off the, doesn't primarily concern the building and is in the technically the landscaped area. So Public Design Commission will have binding jurisdiction. And the proposal is for two flagpoles that would hold the American flag and the Swedish flag around the side entrance to the building. And the applicant has shown that there are, from long distances, they are not visible. And even at points where they become visible, they're not visible in conjunction with the rooftop pole, except when you're very right in front of the building. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
It seems like the applicant has been very thoughtful looking at the issue. I think it's appropriate to fly the two flags, and I think this is appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Likewise, yeah.
Commissioner Letty?
Yeah, I mean, it seems as though the location, the materials being used, and to me, even the scale seems appropriate. I don't know about that other flagpole, but.
It's, it's not part of this application. All right, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I agree with my fellow commissioners. The siding of this is such that the entry and the flagpoles are really facing the hill and, and the landscape, and because it's lower than the roof, you really wouldn't see it from the street side. I also think if you lowered it, I would be concerned that the flag itself would obstruct the facade. So I think in the roof area is probably the correct place to put it.
Agree. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I think they showed us in their visibility study that really it's pretty much only visible right in front. So I would think that it's appropriate.
Right, and Commissioner Jefferson? Okay, all right, so I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you?
With regards to LPC 25-01251, Central Park Swedish Cottage Scenic Landmark. A building constructed in Sweden for the 1876 Philadelphia Exhibition in Fairmont Park and moved to its current site within Central Park. An English Romantic Style Park designed in 1858 by Frederick Law Homestead and Calvert Box. Application is to install, I guess no bronze railing. Application is to install two flagpoles on the site. I recommend approval, a favorable report, finding that the installation of the flagpoles will not cause damage to the building or the site. The size, scale, and placement of the proposed flagpoles located within planting beds in front of the Swedish Cottage or in keeping with the scale and proportions of the building will not obscure or detract from significant architectural features. The granite base of the flagpole is in keeping with materials and natural features found throughout the park, including the Belgium block pavers and the dark brown finish of the poles will recede against the dark finish of the building. And the locations and presence of the flagpole next to the building in an area well screened by trees will not detract from the special character of Central Park Scenic Landmark.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letty? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you. And that concludes our public hearing for today, October 8th. Let's see everybody on October 22nd. There is no hearing next week. Thanks, everybody.